I'd like to call to order the special meeting for city council today, Monday, July 18, 2022. If I can have our city clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
And Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo is absent tonight. Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
And Councilmember Busque.
She's here.
She's here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
I'm here too.
I'm so sorry.
It's late, it's okay.
I'm sorry. No, we have a quorum.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries for zero. I'd like to open comments from the public for agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, the public comments are closed. Moving on to our regular agenda. Our first item is, our first item on the fiscal year 2023 budget is a follow-up review of positions with City Manager Andrew McHugh.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. If I may, I think what we're gonna do is we're just gonna start with the presentation. I'm gonna fill in with these items here, and I think that'll be our best course of action, because there's a couple things that are actually not included in the slide presentation, which I failed to let finance know, but we're gonna slide them in. So, we can do it that way, if that's okay with you guys. We'll start with the first slide there. So, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're just gonna go over a few things that we talked about at the last meeting on June the 6th, which was the capital improvement program meeting. There was some follow-up on some of those things that was needed, so I'm just gonna go through the follow-up. I am not going to go through each of the line items. We're just gonna talk about the items that needed some follow-up. So, just wanted to make sure, as far as property improvement program, the council directed that we use 75,000 for residential, $25,000 for commercial, so that's what we're moving forward with.
With the ability, if they don't apply, it gets...
That's correct. Just the way that it is now with the 50/50, if we don't get enough applications for commercial, that'll just revert over to the residential. Correct. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the educational scholarships. That's okay, that's okay. You're good right there. The educational scholarships, we talked a little bit about that. There was some discussion regarding exploring public-private partnerships. We are not opposed to exploring public-private partnerships. I think one of the things that we'll just need to make sure that we take into account is, a lot of our private partners, a lot of our businesses in the city, they do underwrite a lot of our city events, a lot of our city initiatives. So, I just wanna be careful that we're not going back time after time. But one of the things that did come up was, we have $45,000 in the textile bin account. I know that, you know, there's thoughts about the textile bins. The contract says we receive $20,000 a year from the textile bins. Those are used towards youth programs. That's what those dollars are supposed to be earmarked for. So, we could add, let's say if we added another four scholarships from the textile program per year, that's $6,000 coming out of there. That does not impact anything related to our athletic scholarships that we may do for our programming. It also wouldn't impact our camp scholarships that we use the funds for. So, we could do an additional four. I mean, technically, if the council wanted to explore more, but that would make it an even 10. Six that come from the general fund, that come from the mayor and council's budget, and then four additional from the textile, that would be 10 per year, if the council wishes to look at that as an option. Again, we can absolutely look at public-private partnerships. We can look at setting up donations for individuals that wanna submit donations for things like that, but we do have these funds, the textile funds, and currently, we have about $45,000 in that account. And this past season, we used about 4,600 for summer camp scholarships.
I think at the end of the day...
The textile money.
And make it 10 scholarships?
Make it 10 scholarships.
I think at the end of the day, it still comes out of the city's coffers.
Yeah.
A private-public partnership means new dollars, new dollars coming into the city. It puts the onus on that entity to fundraise. I would like to see both.
Well, how about 10 scholarships with the ability to, if we can't get the businesses to move forward and fund that, we're gonna fund 10 regardless. If we can get private industry to fund some of it, fantastic, but I think we should commit to 10.
They have to volunteer. We don't wanna hit 'em twice.
I don't think it's about hitting them twice. I think it's about creating a mechanism for fundraising. We don't have the mechanism right now to fundraise. So, I think it's, my opinion is, I'm okay whether it comes out of whatever funds, because if it's $20,000, that's going into the youth programs, it's still in the city's coffers, right?
We have a separate fund set up for it, but those dollars coming from the textile bins do go into a separate fund, that we keep those dollars so we can account for them separately.
Excuse me, those textile funds were initially supposed to be for scholarships for youth programs, right?
Youth programs, correct. So, we're just...
Yeah, you're just moving them.
Diverting funds, yeah.
But they're not really city funds. They're not coming out of taxpayer dollars, unless I misunderstood what you said.
Correct. It's either, it's going out either for youth programming scholarships or for college scholarships.
Right. Well, that's fine, okay.
Right. I don't know. Okay, so, I think there's consensus on approving the 10, coming from the textile bin monies. And then, I think I wanna get consensus on creating an entity that's a nonprofit, that we're, we are able to collect money and award different monies.
Absolutely. We've been talking about that and nothing ever happened.
All right, so consensus, yes?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Noble?
How do you define nonprofit? You know, some of them, you have to actually be an organized nonprofit then.
We would have to. I mean, we would have to create a mechanism and apply to be...
A legal nonprofit.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I'm not sure if that's too much work.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I'm in favor, yes.
Yes, okay. So, why don't we explore that, creating a nonprofit for the city?
Okay. So, we're going to do four from the textile funds and six from the budget that we have currently in the budget, okay? The only other thing, a couple of other things before we get into the discussion, wanted to talk a little bit about the proposed positions. I know I did send an email to everyone related to the fire rescue positions for the upcoming fiscal year, and just some justification for those positions. I thought I would start there. Are there any questions related to that presentation, or anything related to the justification? Our chief can answer any questions that you might have related to those positions and the need for those positions for the upcoming fiscal year.
I have a comment.
Yes?
Adding personnel is your biggest fixed cost, so as long as we're in a good position, fine. When it gets to the point where we have some trouble or clouds on the horizon, we have to start thinking about not doing that.
I think that as a rule, we've always been pretty conservative about our adding of new positions, and we're at the point where, for example, and not to take too much time, we're adding a part-time, we're adding a part-time position to our passport office. And the thought process behind that is that sometimes the line is so long, we have to close the line at 2:00 PM. So, when you look at the amount of revenue that we're generating in the passport office, it makes sense to add more, add another position that still is not costing the city too much money, but we're able to now potentially make additional revenue from it. So, we take a lot of different factors into play when we're looking at adding new positions for the operational needs of the city. So, absolutely agree with you on that.
In that case, what I think is good is if people get sick, or if someone goes on vacation, you do need an extra personnel anyway.
Correct. The other thing that we were asked to look at, we were asked to look at an economic development position. Previously, as some of you know, we did have an economic development position in the budget several years ago. When we initially looked at that position, we were looking at doing our strategic action plan and working through our strategic action plan. I felt at the time that the timing was not good to be able to bring someone on board until we went through that process. We have since gone through that process. You know, I go back and forth when I think about an economic development position and, you know, what we're looking for to come from an economic development position. And as I created a position description and talked about it with our HR director, I think the only way that we're gonna get a benefit from creating an economic development position is if we're creating a senior-level position. Can't be a specialist position, can't be an entry-level type position. We're looking at probably a director-level position. It's going to need to be someone that has a fair amount of economic development background. I don't know that a position where you're requiring a few years of experience is going to really get us the benefit that we're looking for. I think, as all of you know, we're 99% built out. New developments are really going to come in through annexation. We're looking at redevelopment. We have plazas that are in need of redevelopment, some plazas that have some vacant space. Some, you know, I will tell you that, from an economic development perspective, there are some things that I've tried to do to bring in some businesses to the city. Responses from those entities were that our demographic won't support those businesses, when I clearly know our demographic will support some of those businesses. Additionally, there has been some pushback from the Business Development Board. They feel that they should be the economic development driver for Palm Beach County, but I will tell you that in meeting with them, they have said that there's very little that they can do for the city of Green Acres, because we really don't have a lot for them to work with. So, there are some things that we can do from an incentive perspective, you know, different things like that to attract individuals. But as I looked at everything in totality and what we're looking at the goal to be, whether it's promoting and, you know, promoting economic growth through, you know, increased employment, investment opportunities, relationships, things like that, or maintaining the economic environment that we have and supporting that economic environment that we have, I think that we're going to need a position that is more a higher level position for the city. So, when we were looking at salaries, we're looking at probably in the 90s, somewhere in the mid-90s for the position, from a salary perspective, not fully burdened. So, fully burdened, probably 130, somewhere around there. 130, 140, somewhere around there.
I have a comment.
Yes?
I go back to development properties, and you know, I brought up the fact that there are pieces of land on 10th Avenue that were around off our park area. So, that should be included as part of his duties and responsibilities, to be able to negotiate real estate transactions, as well as everything else you've just mentioned.
Yes, we can, I mean, we can do that. Currently, we work with an attorney that does those real estate transactions for us. In particular, some of the transactions that we're looking to do related to expanded fire rescue services, so we've been working with an attorney on that, only because from our perspective, it's better to work with a third party, that really, it's not us going and saying, "Hey, will you sell us your property?" That we found that we yield a better result going through a party that they actually don't know that, you know, the city is interested in purchasing the land.
Thank you.
So, obviously, the first economic development position that was created was a push of mine, because I know that we need to attract, in order to, in order to continue to grow the city in a smart way. But we've hit, we hit, you know, against the wall a little bit here with what we were trying to do. And I think the issue is us. And what I mean us is this body up here. We need, we created, we went through a visioning, and we created a vision for the city, and then our actions haven't really aligned very closely with that vision. And now, that's, I think, four or five years old, right?
18, 19.
Right, so, four years old. And I think our city manager just hit the nail right on the head. I mean, we're built out. If we're gonna do anything for growth, it's gonna be annexation. So, what we gotta do is attract people that are going to redevelop bladed areas. So, we gotta create a program or incentives to attract people to wanna invest here. So, I am in favor of this position if this person is going to lead us in that path. And every single meeting, they're gonna be here, and they're gonna walk us through, and they're gonna educate us, and they're gonna, you know, show us what, you know, the latest and the greatest of redevelopment is all about. I think we need that. I think we, this body here, needs to create some sort of incentives, get some of those big, massive parcels that we have redeveloped, because I think there's tremendous opportunity, but we just gotta give them a reason why. Why pick Green Acres? Because I think right now, there's no incentive to want to come to Green Acres. The Business Development Board, oh my God, I blanked out, is trying to bring in massive employers. They're trying to bring in the big fish, right? We don't have that here. Unfortunately, as much as, when I first got elected, I thought we were gonna, you know, do something great. And the BDB said, unfortunately, your demographics and your space, the first thing they ask us is how much space do you have available? And we really don't have much. So, I really want this, I am in favor of the position. I want that person to lead us through the process of creating an incentive package, and I'm talking to the board here, that we really reshape where Green Acres is at in 10 years, because we brought in people that were willing to invest into redeveloping an area. So, that is my two cents. Anybody else? Councilmember Diaz?
We need restaurants.
We need redevelopment first.
I believe if you look at municipalities around us that invested in a high-level economic development position, the return was there on that investment. There's several that I can think of off the top of my head. And I agree, we need someone who's visionary. We need someone who can, you know, liaise with us, educate us on what we don't know, and help us bring that visioning to fruition. It's time.
I would be in agreement with what...
Yes?
Yes.
Consensus? Councilmember Busque, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Senior-level position it is.
Yep.
Let's invest.
All right. Next item, just to talk about before we get into anything else, is the request to take a look at the meeting recording management system that we have. And I swear that I think, based on the technical difficulties we had tonight, it's someone trying to push something, whether it's the vendor that George dealt with, I don't know, but someone's trying to push something. But what I will tell you is that we currently have budgeted about $20,000 in this fiscal year budget, and really, that budget was just to look at the monitors. That screen is about 15 years old. It doesn't go up anymore. The projector really doesn't work very much. So, we thought, with what we were dealing with, we were going to put in probably one big monitor, so that people don't have to look both ways to be able to cover that. And then, there was a suggestion that we go take a look at a couple of other options, in particular, the Transportation Planning Agency and the system that they have in place, which our Director of IT said it is a very good system. It would do everything that we needed it to do. But the cost of that system would be somewhere between $130,000 to $150,000, based on the infrastructure that we have, or the lack thereof infrastructure that we have here at the city, and what they are working with. So, a suggestion from staff, I think that we're gonna take a look. I think it was a laptop issue that we were dealing with earlier. So, I think that that was part of the reason we had some of the technical difficulties that we did. But I would ask that I think that, since the council did approve a capital improvement project to assess the needs of the building in totality for future years, to account for future growth for the city, I'd like to be able to look at it as part of that project. I don't know ultimately what the chambers will look like with any recommendation that we make, because frankly, this building is not going to support a lot of future growth over the next 10 to 15 years, based on the way that the building was designed. And that's nothing against anyone that would have designed it, it's a fact based on the way that the building was designed, and where we are from a staffing level, from a services level. It's just not going to meet the needs forever. So, with that, of course, the council, if you would like us to just move forward and look at that, we can look at it. Again, we currently have $20,000 in the budget, but based on where we are, we're looking probably at about between 130, 150, $100,000, depending on the must-have features that we're looking for. And I think that if we're gonna do it right, we need to do it right.
Sounds good to me.
How long would, are we talking the assessment would take to get the new, whatever it is?
To be really honest with you, in assessments, probably, we're going to start looking into it at the beginning of the fiscal year. The money's budgeted for fiscal year 23, and then really, we wouldn't break ground on anything probably till fiscal year 24. I mean, to be realistic, we're not gonna, we're not gonna break ground on anything until then.
Is this equipment gonna get us through two, three years?
Without modifications, probably not. I don't know that it would be 130,000 to 150,000 in modifications, but I think that our city clerk's office is still going to have the challenge with, you know, some of the resources that they're working with and dealing with. I mean, they've been able to manage some things. We probably are able to put, you know, some patches in place here and there to fix it, but I can't promise you that it would. I just, you know, it's just really weighing the investment of 130 to 150 versus what are we looking to recommend, and is the space for the council going to be this particular space? Is it going to change based on what we're looking at for the building, you know, and things that we've discussed preliminarily before we've even gotten started?
My opinion, we, this body here uses this space two times a month, if that, because sometimes we use it once a month. And as we can see, it holds the audience that we need it to hold. We're not busting at the seams. So, if we were going to add more space, I think, investment-wise, it would probably be better use for it to be the needs of our staff. I don't know that we need to redo the council, unless these become then offices, I guess. But I'm okay with continuing to use this space for I don't know how long. And if we need office spaces, then we create office spaces for our staff to be adequately, whatever that becomes, right? So, I don't know if, I guess my opinion is we invest 100, whatever it is here. We make this long-term, and whatever new spaces that we need, that the assessments say, then we build that for our growth, whether it's staff, passport, whatever, whatever it is. That's my opinion. And I'm here to get feedback from you guys, because this is what we're here for.
Well, would it be easier if we needed more space for passports to take over this space and move us someplace else, which would be more cost-effective, more logical? I don't know.
I guess that's what we need to assess, yeah.
I feel like we need to have the assessment to figure out, because as far as, you know, if it's, if she need, if we need to expand space for staff, staff needs to be close to their coworkers, not, you know, somewhere else. So, I don't know. I mean, if it's possible that we need to expand office space, then this would be the logical expansion for that. Just my thoughts.
Any other thoughts?
My thought is, separate bottom, separate building, separate from this building for the passport department.
Deputy Mayor, I mean, I think we need to follow Ms. McHugh's, you know, guidance here, and I think we do need an assessment. I don't, I don't think we know what we need and what we don't need. So, I think we need to do the research and then make a decision.
I can agree with that.
I agree.
Assessment.
Okay. All right. I think then we can go ahead into the capital improvement summary. Thank you very much on those other items. For the capital improvement summary, yep, we can go to the first slide, 301, new growth. Just a couple of updates on that. If you recall, back at the June 6th meeting, we did talk about Pickwick and the opportunity maybe to take over some space there to add to our total number of acres and open space in the city. At this point, right now, Pickwick has responded to us that they don't know that they're prepared or ready to do something yet. So, we have removed that item from the 301 fund. That's no longer there. Additionally, we did have a generator included in the 301 fund, and there have been some issues with the procurement of that generator, that for the time being, that generator has also been removed from the 301 fund. So, what you're seeing there is really just a net difference of $65,000, based on the revenue and the expenditure. And really, the one expenditure, I mean, yeah, net revenue to the plus of 65, the one expenditure is an in-and-out. So, we're looking at a $1.7 million balance in the 301 fund, which is the new growth. So, we can go ahead to the next one. The next one is the 303 fund. Get my notes for 303. Based on the projects, we don't have any changes there. Based on the projects, what would the anticipated impact fees coming in at revenues? The net difference is 383,000, expenses over revenue. So, we're looking at a balance in the 303 fund, based on those projects presented, $1.2 million left there. Next one, 304. The 304 fund, this is our fund that really is the most challenging fund. This is the reconstruction and maintenance. This is the one where we do expend the most dollars. You will see an inter-fund transfer of $300,000 in, for the fiscal year 23. Based on that, we're looking at an ending fund balance of $748,000, and then the restricted second local option gas tax backing that out. We're at an end fund balance of $300,000 there, and that second local option gas tax is really what's used for roadway resurfacing, things of that nature. Moving on to the 305 fund, the 305 fund, this is the CERTAX, the infrastructure CERTAX. With this one, again, I think we talked about this one at length at the June 6th meeting, where we are with the $23 million. I think when we look at the total amount of projects, based on the anticipated 23 million, I think we were at about 8 million left, somewhere around there. We, when we do our budget projections, we are basing it on just the fiscal year. So, what we're anticipating in coming in and what's going out, we're anticipating a pretty high number that we would be getting from the state and infrastructure dollars. We have that at 3.9 million. So, when you're looking at the ending fund balance there, you're, well, the beginning fund balance minus the net change, the net change has the revenue over the expenditures, and we're looking at $2.9 million left in the 305 fund. Okay, American Rescue Plan, 306 fund. This one, there's going to be some continued discussion. I'm gonna go over just the items that we talked about at the last meeting. Our Director of Finance is going to do the budget review with you, but you are going to see here an inter-fund transfer of $3.5 million under the revenue. And remember, we only budget for these dollars as we're proposing to spend them. So, the way that the American Rescue Plan is, is that we receive half this year, half next year of the total $20 million. The...
When you say this year, you're meaning...
Fiscal year 22. Yep, this current fiscal year, we've already received that $10 million. So, we've already received that. The next $10 million will be 12 months after, I think, anticipated when we received the first $10 million. So, we'll receive the balance at that point. You are going to see the inter-fund transfer of $3.5 million. Our Director of Finance will talk a little bit more about that. Just to forewarn you, when you look at the proposed budget, you are going to see that it's at a minus 2.7 million. No one needs to freak out about that. We're not at a minus 2.7 million, but our unassigned reserved has really grown, meaning the fund balance has really grown to a point where we're over 40% of our unassigned reserves. So, we thought, knowing that these projects are going to probably cost more than $10 million, that we move $3.5 million from that unassigned reserve, and it still keeps us pretty high. So, you're gonna see that reflected later on one of the slides, but it's showing there in the 306 fund. We also do have in here as a line item, the $2 million from the House Community Project, which was awarded, and the request was put into the federal budget from Congresswoman Frankel's office. So, based on that, again, we budget what we're spending. We're looking at an ending fund balance in the 306 fund of $630,000 in the 306 fund.
Where are you putting the inter-fund transfer?
The inter-fund transfer, it's in the revenue section. It's the last line in the revenue section. It's the last line in the revenue section.
Where's going?
Oh, where's it going? It is going, it is going towards the projects, the projects that we're going to be spending out of the three oh six fund, which are really a lot of fire rescue related projects. The, the projects coming out of the three oh six fund are related to fire rescue and also to youth programs. Any questions on that one? No? Okay, let me just make sure that, um, okay. Next slide, law enforcement service agreement. You will see based on the direction from the council, this is showing, I think we can go actually to the next slide. Yep, the next slide showing for fiscal, for the, the upcoming fiscal year, the total cost there. The council did agree, we will need to tweak some of the dollars on the community policing officer. That will be reflected in the, in, in the next presentation. We got some adjusted numbers from PBSO. It is, it is minimal, the amount that we're doing the adjustments. We just want to make sure the information we bring to you guys to approve as the addendum matches what we have in the budget. But that's what we're looking at going into this ninth addendum and the next fiscal year, the ten point seven million dollars. And the increase is the two percent, and then also the additional positions that were needed.
I, I do have a question, the crossing guard.
Yes.
Why is it, why is it our responsibility?
Yeah.
How we, did we, before putting this on the budget, did we go to the school district and request based on the, the needs analysis that was made?
No, I-
That half the kids are coming from the county. I mean, why, why are we paying for it?
I, I think that within our, within the jurisdiction, the municipality for, within the jurisdiction, the municipality pays for the crossing guards. So I believe prior to going, entering into a contract with PBSO, we also still paid for the, the, the crossing guards. So-
And then another observation, why are there some in, in like shorts and white shirt with a orange vest and some that look like they're professionals?
That I don't know the answer to. We can follow up on that one. I don't know the answer to that. Um, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Talking, because when I leave my, my neighborhood, I always see the same two individuals the entire year, but they didn't have a uniform. They only had like the, the green vest.
Okay, I can look into that. I don't know the answer to that. I know that when, when we first went into the contract, there were so many crossing guards, and I assume it was based on the number of crossing guards that we had in the city, that that just turned over and, and those crossing guards became our responsibility through the contract. Since then, we have added additional crossing guards. And when that has happened, it has either come through, you know, PBSO has gone out, I think they have a, a division or a group that goes out to confirm that whether it's warranted or not warranted. I think a couple of years ago, we had down here near Heritage Elementary, the crosswork, the crosswalk that was put in based on where we found or where PBSO found that people were crossing, that it was warranted there. So I know for these two additional, the locations of the two additional crossing guards, those crossing guards, our PBSO District sixteen did also go out and confirm that those two crossing guards were also needed as well. But I, I think that that's what everybody pays. I think everybody pays it.
Again, I have to emphasize my point. I brought it up in many years. The school board essentially put those schools so that they come in from the county and from the city. And we are paying for county cost. Those kids are from the county. We should review this and have a very serious review and try to get that cost down.
I think in the, in the conversations that we've had previously, when, when we talked about crossing guards, the schools are within our jurisdiction, so that's what the pushback is, because those schools are within our jurisdiction. And because of school choice, our students could potentially be going to schools in Boca or going to schools in Riviera Beach that live in our city. So I think that that, that is the consideration that is taken into play when the argument is made.
Probably minor compared to the thousands of kids that are walking across military trail coming into our schools.
My, my, my question is not the needs analysis. If, if it's warranted, then we should have a guard out there. I'm just, where, where does it say that the school district doesn't pay? We pay. I, I think that's my, my, for my own knowledge, if you can send me that at some point.
We'll, we'll look for that information.
I'm not debating the point, I'm just-
They have one school board member that has no district, so, and who pays for that money? For those kids?
I will see what I can find out on that.
I think a major review has to go through there.
I will definitely-
They're gonna fight it all the way, let me tell you. I mean, this is a big cost for them.
Yeah.
But, you know, I bring out another point. When I look at my tax bill and I pay Green Acres ad verorum tax, it's a nice, small number. Then I go down and look at the tax bill and look what I'm paying for the school board. The school board tax I'm paying is double to maybe triple what I pay to Green Acres. I have no kids in school. I have no grandkids in school. I never have had kids in school. And yet their budget is double the ours. And so our citizens are paying a lot of money for school board tax that I don't think they should be.
Let's just say that that is not the opinion of everybody on this board.
Well, listen, I, I'll keep talking as long as I can.
All right.
No, I will follow up and look into that and see what kind of information I can get on that.
It's just a point of clarity for me.
Yep, absolutely. No problem. I think that's it for me.
It's one of the point of clarity, it's money.
I think that's it for me. I think I'll turn it over to our director of finance, that's going to talk about the general fund. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Terry Lee Berger, Finance Director. I'm going to walk you through the proposed general budget, general operating fund budget for 2023. Keep in mind, we're still receiving some updates on quotes and state numbers. Before we go into the budget, we almost need to find out where we are at now. So we have this, the slide on the screen, I think it's page eighteen in your handouts, is showing the forecast for May twenty, uh, of May of 2022. We're still working on July's, closing the month of July, so. As of May, we have forecasted pretty good. And when I say pretty good, our forecast for July, I'm sorry, our forecast for revenue is up above what we expected. We're about one point three million. This is really due to absent sales tax, of course, passports, coding, code enforcement, even our tenant, our fields for rent. When we look at our expenditures, we are three hundred and twenty-four dollars under bu, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars under budget. This is, a lot of it's due to attrition, and we do have a little bit high right now in overtime for public safety. But we're watching this number and making sure that it's going to stay in, in that three hundred thousand dollar range. And when we, when, when we do the forecast, we not only include what we've spent, what we're going to spend, but also our outstanding POs. So we try to keep this as accurate as we can as far as a forecast, and hopefully there's no surprises. So being from there, we, we were looking at like one point eight million dollars right now as a net to be carried over or, or put into our general fund. So from there, let's look at our 2023 proposed budget. Any, any questions on our forecast? From there, we're going to look at 2023 proposed budget. Now, in these scenarios, we're looking at a six point four, we're working on a six point four millage. With that, that should bring us about fifteen million dollars. Everything else is pretty much on, online with how we've been going. Not too many surprises, and then, as I mentioned before, we still have some numbers that are still coming down from the state. We're missing a few. We take the state numbers, we look at what we've been getting from the state, and we come up with an estimate on those. No, I know a city manager had mentioned before that we do need to stay within our reserve. Right now, we run about a forty percent reserve. So keep that in mind when we look at some of these other numbers. When we look at expenditures, our personnel, we have added those positions that we have talked about previously. Now, of course, the economic development position is not in there, but the additional firefighters and so forth that we talked about previously have been added to this number. So our personnel is estimated at seventeen million dollars. PBSO contract, we've already talked about that. When we look at the bottom line number, and again, Ms. McHugh had said not to panic, we are looking at a negative seven, two point seven. In that, we are looking at transferring three point five million dollars from the inter-fund into Fund Three Oh Six. Now, that leaves us at, again, negative two point seven. So I'm going to-
Can you repeat that again, please?
Okay, which, um-
So I understand that. What, what is the benefit?
So we're looking to transfer three point five million from the general fund-
We talked about before, yes.
Into, into Three Oh Six. And that is our CIP three, I, Three Oh Six that was mentioned earlier.
Where do we see that here? That's what-
Oh, sure. It's in the expense, it says four point three oh five. That four point three oh five also includes the mortgage, I'm sorry, the loan payment. Now, keep in mind, too, we'll, we'll have that loan payment this year and next, up until two thousand twenty-four, and then that loan will be paid off. So we only have two more years of that. So I don't know if you can highlight, can you highlight that four point three? Okay, no problem. Okay. Okay, when we look at the next page, we've projected that out into five years. Again, maintaining a six point four millage rate. Oh, go ahead.
Before we move into the projections, since January, the econ, the economy has not been all that great. The inflation is through the roof. What has, what, what have, what are you seeing? I mean, I know this is through May, I, I know this is a little bit behind, but are expenses drastically going up over the next three, four months? Or are they, are we expecting it to go back down?
This forecast is projected all the way to the end of the year. We're forecasting-
Through, through October, but I'm asking, between now, July to October, inflation has gone up, there's a few issues out there. Is it, are we looking at any issues that might, we might not be forecasting? Or are we taking into account, you know, seven percent inflation and all of that good stuff?
You probably haven't built it in yet, but-
No.
Wasn't he about cost or, or-
No, we're taking, we're taking it into account.
Probably living off our contracts that we've already agreed to.
We have contracts that we agreed to, but for example, we did receive a request from Waste Management, that they asked us to go from the three point five percent that we, that they have in their contract to five point four four percent.
Wow.
The city did not agree to go from three point five to five point four four. In, in, normally what happens is, is, you know, we send the notices to all the residents, the residents come to our meetings because they don't understand that that's not an additional, that, that it is just we moved the trash to the tax bill. So the way that we're looking at it is, we haven't told Waste Management no, and the amount is about forty-four thousand dollars. But understanding that we've had a lot of issues with Waste Management and their collection and, and just, we get, we've had a lot of complaints over the last couple of years, we told them that we would consider giving them the additional one point, whatever percent that is, which equates to about forty-four thousand dollars, but we are tying it to performance. And the other thing that we're looking at, rather than sending out notices to all of our residents and telling them that we're going to increase their percentage to five point four four percent, we agreed that we would reduce the administrative fees that we get from them and actually just take the forty-four thousand dollars from the administrative fees because it would be less of an issue for us, rather than sending notice to all of our residents and having them come to the meeting and, and for the forty-four thousand dollars. It did not make sense. So for one, we're tying it to performance. If they don't perform, and we, we are establishing criteria for that performance, they don't perform, they don't get the additional dollars from the three point four percent, I mean, three point five percent to five point four four percent. And in addition to that, the way, where we're getting those dollars is we're just reducing our administrative fee that we get from them to pay it.
It's a Band-Aid, though, so you're gonna have to think about what you're gonna do next year.
No, that is, that's correct. And we're going in that, that contract-
Have that meeting eventually.
Eventually, we will, but based on performance, we'll go out to bid again. You know, we'll take it out to bid again, and I will tell you that our purchasing department does a really good job of, of checking the prices for commodities and, and doing whatever we can do to try and save dollars wherever we can. So we've really, I, I will tell you, the impact to the city has not been, while in certain areas, we've seen some impact, but we are getting a fair amount of revenue from the state at this point, a lot of revenue from the state right now.
Going a little ahead of you. If inflation is going up, sooner or later, that fee has got to go higher. So you're gonna have to have that meeting.
Correct. It, it will, but under the current contract right now, this was the best way to handle that without really causing a storm.
So, so going back to our original question regarding inflation and the economic situation, worst case scenario, what, what, what could it be? Is there a worst case scenario? And I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm looking at is the, your forecast for the end of the year? And then for the forecast for next year, could, could there be a significant variance based on economic outlook? Because they're talking about a recession. So what if we go into a recession? What, what is the impact in the city? I guess that's my question.
Well, it balances out. You're gonna go higher cost, and then you have a recession, lower cost. So you may have a balancing situation ultimately.
Yes. Okay. It was, each department put that into consideration when they did do their budget.
I don't think they're in the position to forecast.
No, we, we've, we've, the forecasts that we're providing you, I think it's on the next slide, those forecasts are good forecasts based on what we're looking at from the state with the anticipated revenue and what we're looking at for anticipated costs and potential projected costs from our purchasing department and some of the other contracts that we have. So we, we have taken those things into it. For example, we have a contract with Atlantis to provide services to them. We received a letter from Atlantis, understanding that CPI is about nine percent. They want to ensure that we're covering our costs, understanding that the contract says CPI or three point five percent, whichever is higher, or three percent, whichever is higher, they, in fairness to us, knowing that our costs increase, they're willing to take on an additional increase, so we're trying to negotiate with them. Because in good conscience, the nine percent, I don't know that our costs have increased that significantly that it warrants a nine percent increase. But there are some cost increases that have happened where we want to be able to account for it, and Atlantis is open to being able to renegotiate, and we will bring that before you once we have that, that new negotiated rate going into the next fiscal year. So we're taking all of those things into consideration.
Those nine percent numbers are monthly numbers, so you have to look at it from an-
You do, we do, and we do. Mm-hmm.
I'll go along.
Any more questions? Okay.
You girls are doing a good job.
No, if we haven't answered, is there something else, Mayor, that we haven't answered that you're, that you're-
I guess I'm asking worst case scenario, are we, what would be worst case scenario? That's what I'm asking.
Worst case scenario, we're gonna keep things flat. That's gonna be worst case scenario probably for us, but where we-
Have we considered, since, since, you know, the costs of, of goods are so high, are we, are we pushing things out on a timeline so that when we start building this fire station and we start the EOC center and we start all of these projects, we're not paying top dollars?
Correct.
And hopefully, we let things sort of-
We are.
Come back down to earth. I guess that's-
Yep, we are. We're looking at all of those things, and we've talked to our contracted engineer about those things as well.
You'll, you'll have to have readjustments as you go along.
Mm-hmm, we will. Just based on the youth programs building, when we initially looked at that, it's now about two million higher than it was previously. And we're hoping that when we go through that process and we, we get to the point where the prices of commodities will hopefully be in a better, in better shape, that the prices will be lower at that point. But we're taking all of those things into consideration.
Lost the labor going up, too.
Okay, so back to the five year projections. Again, keeping in mind it was six point four millage rate. This brings us, and our note is being paid off in 2024. When, when we look at the next slide- When, when we look at the next slide, this is our unassigned reserve. Yeah, the next. Okay. Remember, we have council policy 18 that requires us to have at least a 25% reserve, unassigned reserve. Our current forecast is 45%. With this 2.5, I'm sorry, 3.5 million being transferred, it looks like it's gonna be 33, 33.88% and so forth throughout those years with using that five, five-year projection.
So that was the thought process. Because the unassigned reserve has gotten so high at this point, just based on the way that we're managing the budget as a city. So the thought process was that we have those available funds and we know that the costing is going to be, you know, what, what we're anticipating the potential costing to be for some of these projects that we're having in the 306 fund, that it would be appropriate for us to reduce the unassigned reserve still to a point where we're still well above the 25% which is required, you know, for unassigned reserve percentage of expenditures. We felt that it was appropriate to be able to do that and, and move those dollars so that they're in the 306 fund.
Can I just make a comment from our previous comments? You have a wind at your back because every one of us who pay, pay property tax know that inflation is going up. So, believe me, they feel it behind us that there's a tax increase potentially there. We're gonna not do it if we can, but they know it's there.
Any more questions on the budget? Okay. So our next thing is to look at a tentative millage rate. So we need to set a tentative millage rate. So what is on, okay. This slide shows different scenarios of, of millage rate. So there's two different types. There's one with the $3.5 million transfer and one without. So the first section is one without the 3.5 million transfer. We use a 6.4 millage and then load it by about 10% to make a 5.7 millage rate. And then rollback rate of 5.69. Now, again, you can see with the causin' effect of that on our bottom-line dollar and also the unassigned reserve. We're still in a healthy unassigned reserve on all three scenarios. If we look at the other side with the $3.5 million transfer, with the same millage rate scenarios, we are still in a pretty good, healthy reserve. So with these scenarios, we need some guidance as to what you would like the millage rate to be set at. Now, this is a tentative millage rate. We can set it at this rate and we can lower it, but we just can't raise it.
So we're proposing...
Before the end of July, the city has to provide...
Right, right.
...what our tentative millage rate is going to be. We're just showing you these different scenarios. We have seen that other municipalities have recently had discussions regarding their millage rates, where they're setting their millage rate, 6.4 is our millage rate currently. So it would, we could, the, the council could set the millage rate at the 6.4 that we currently are at and then have discussions. And we can reduce it if the council desires for us to reduce it. The other thing to take into consideration as well, the 3.5 million inter-fund transfer. If you hold off and don't do it this year, it doesn't hurt anything by not doing it. Your unassigned reserve is just going to be a higher percentage. It's going to be higher than what you have set in your council policy of 25%. But if you decide that you do not want to do that inter-fund transfer this year, we're gonna hold off and see what we look like next year and then potentially do an inter-fund transfer then. We can do that. And then you see what the numbers look like based on not doing the inter-fund transfer. We're $753,000 to the good. The unassigned reserve is at 43.84%. If the council decides that they want to drop the millage in some, in some fashion and don't necessarily want to go to rollback, we gave just, I think that's a 10%. It's a 10% reduction. So just showing the 10% reduction, that's what it looks like there. It is causing a deficit. But again, our unassigned reserve is pretty high. That's really not an issue with even that deficit that we're showing there. And then also, it shows the rollback because we're obligated to also show you what that rollback looks like.
There's no way in hell that we have to lower, we should lower the rate. Because the way we just talked about inflation. Now, we're living in La La Land because we got 20 million here and 10 million here and whatnot. One day, that money is gonna be gone. And all of a sudden, you have expenses that you have to pay. So I, I, and then you wanna redesign this building, which is gonna costly, which I think we should do. So no way that we could go down. And, and I, we'd be very good citizens if we just left it, leave it where it is.
Well, we felt that we should show you different scenarios. Just based on discussions that we've had, we felt that it would be appropriate to show those scenarios.
Okay. The 3.5 million that we're moving, is that earmarked for something? That came from the American Rescue Funds?
No, no, the 3.5 million is just unassigned reserve. It's just fund balance. Our fund balance has grown to a point where we felt that it was appropriate to move 3.5 million from the fund balance to the 306 fund, knowing that the costs for future fire rescue facilities that we're looking to do for expansion of fire rescue services in addition to the youth programs building, we know that we're going to have some costs there. So we felt that that was the appropriate place to put those if we were going to reduce that fund balance based on it being around $17 million.
All right. I, I was trying to see that, that slide that we were just at. Can we go back to that?
Oh.
Prior one.
The one we just ended on?
Um, 23.
All right.
23. Yeah, that one?
Yeah, this one. So next year, are we, are we saying if we go to a 5.76? Let's just use that one. Would next year, would it be 5.76 again? It wouldn't, right? Because we're, we're injecting 3.5 million. Am I getting that correct or wrong? Because next year, we're not transferring 3.5 million. So what I'm saying, next year, where's that gap gonna come from?
What were we talking about?
The, the gap is going to come from, if you're keeping the millage at 5.76, depending what our rev, expenditures look like going into fiscal year '24, that's where you're going to see the difference based on the 5.76 for the ad valorem and the amount of revenues that we're bringing in versus what our future expenses are going to be. And if our expenses increase significantly or increase, you're gonna then see where the, the variance is between the two.
Well, the difference between 5.7 and 6.4 is a million, million six. It's all more that, that's all you get more, is a million six. Everything else is the same. All the other revenue is the same.
Correct.
Right, right. It impacts the ad valorem.
Any...
Makes no sense to go below, let me tell you.
Any other feedback from the council?
Well, I often report the, the 6.4. We can always go back. We're not increasing anything here.
I, I think that should be the course of action for today. But, I mean, this is our time to ask questions, so...
I, I agree. I agree 100%.
I agree with setting the 6.4. I'd like to see, I'd like to see something between the 5.7 and the 6.4 presented. You know, with all due respect, I understand where Councilmember Noble is coming from. However, I also see that we have, you know, our policy states 25% in unreser, in unassigned reserves. And we are sitting on, you know, 43, almost 44%. So it, it, I, I can't go back to our residents in good conscience and say, "We're not gonna roll back taxes when the county has done so and other municipalities has done, have done so." But we're sitting on 45% instead of 25%. I, I just can't do that in good conscience. So I would like to propose that we do the 6.4 and that maybe staff comes back with a recommendation between 5.6 and 6.4.
So for a point of clarity, if we go with the, the transfer to general funds, it won't be quite that high. And the other thing is, the county, yes, they went down on the millage. But they're also gonna try to float some bonds out there for people to, to pass, which... Just keep that, keep, keep, keep your eye on the ball. And then they're gonna try to pass a 1% transportation. So this is all coming. This is all coming. Just saying. So they, they lowered it, I don't know how much. It wasn't very much, but they're, you know, they're...
They'll make it up with fees.
They'll make it up with other fees. I'm just, I'm just clarifying that aspect that there's...
Thank you, and, and I understand. I, I'm good with the 6.4, but I would like to just see something between that 6.7, 5.76 and the 6.4.
I, I completely agree with you. I'm just, you, you threw out the county dropped it, but I just wanna...
They dropped it but tried to increase it at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, so...
One half dozen of another.
Is there any scuttlebutt that banks, that some cities are lowering their taxes?
In the picture.
Some are.
Are, are we hearing that some cities are lowering their taxes? Have we heard that?
There are some. There are some, there are some that, we've seen some, just in conversations that we've had or conversations that I've had with some of the managers, some things that we've seen in the paper that some of the municipalities are, are considering lowering their millage. Yes. Yes. So what we're thinking is, is that we would like a vote from the council to tentatively set the millage rate for fiscal year '23 at the 6.4. But I think, just based on some of the things that we heard today, I think it would be important for us to probably come back the second meeting in August and have some additional budget discussion so you can see these scenarios. You can see the addition of the positions. You can see some of those things. I think that that would be appropriate to bring that back again so that you can see, we should have more clarity on some of the numbers from the state. We should have a better picture at that point. So I think then we can...
Can I ask for something very specific? Can we see 5.9, 6, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3? Would that, would that work?
Can you say that one more time?
5.9, 6, 6.1, 6.2, 6.3.
But it, it's pennies. I mean, you're, you're talking about the difference. We're talking about a million six here, and you start talking, getting different...
It, it, it's penny for us, but it's for our residents.
Our residents are experiencing...
But our residents only pay $15,000 a year.
But once, so point of clarity, today, we don't have to make that decision. I, I just, we, I think there should be a motion to, for right now, leave it at 6.4. We get the information to all the council members. And then when we come to the meeting in August, we'll make that final determination. I think we're, all we're asking right now is for numbers.
I'd like to make a comment. All right. Related to Ms. Diaz. 40% excess over, that, that figure we've been talking about. That's, that's, that's an illusion. And that's only because we're, we're moving numbers around and we're padding it, our numbers, so that we're protected for future years. So it hasn't, the 40% has nothing to do with the concerns that we should be having about the next two, three, four years. And, and who knows? Maybe there would be a recession. Who knows, the depression? But I don't think we should, I think we start with a higher number, I think 640, and then we'll discuss it. And certainly, we'll see how it looks. But the money doesn't come from ad valorem. The money comes from all those fees. Look at the, look at all the numbers, the names underneath it. That's the money that our taxpayers get free. All they're paying is for, my tax, my pay for taxes, what, $400, $500 a year? Peanuts to run this whole city. So the average taxpayer in green acres is not being hit, believe me.
I feel it.
I, I only wish, I only wish I had $500 a year in city taxes.
Every resident here feels it.
How are you feeling it? Tell me how.
Because that's money I pay to escrow every single month. And if I'm feeling it, I'm pretty sure my residents feel it. And if we can give them a little bit of relief, I think we should...
You're complaining about the, about school board tax, which is double or triple.
I, I'm not complaining. I got three kids in school, but...
I think that's an investment in our future, just as this is.
Once, once again, let's just, I, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a, a millage for today at 6.4. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
I'll second 6.4.
And make the motion a second, one or the other.
All right, so we're gonna set it at 6.4. We have a motion by Councilmember Noble, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. Any, any other discussions before we, we leave today?
Yeah, how do I get out of here?
That's a good idea.
The only thing that I wanted to bring up is the $3.5 million. Do you want to see the scenarios with or without the $3.5 million transfer?
With.
Okay.
All right, do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor.
All right, that motion carries for nothing. Does, does that conclude your presentation?
Go ahead. We had just two more slides, but...
Two more slides, yes. There's just two more slides.
So we had the standard rollback at 6.4 and to rollback to 5, 5.69?
Right.
And then we have our lovely chart that we have every year. That's it. At 6.4. That's it?
Councilmember, Councilmember Noble, you could look like a hero if you brought this down to 5.76.
I don't want to be hero.
Okay.
I, I, I've gone through bankruptcy. No, I haven't gone through bankruptcy, but I've gone through hard times.
All right. On behalf of this board, thank you, ladies, for the work that you did. Sorry that we were all over the place. I apologize about that.
Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All right, motion, meeting's adjourned.
Everything's signed.
No, no, I don't want to sign anymore. I don't want to sign.
Is that another one?
It was just one. It was, it was attached to another one.
He was asking if we include in the forecast.
Are they both in here or...
Yeah, I'm just on you.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Listen, next year, we, we also... If you do say so yourself.
I should have taken both of those long times.
You're gonna take both?
Yeah.
My recurring thought in my mind was, it's almost like you guys know what you're doing.
You said almost.
Almost.
Every time I have a, you know, a conversation with my wife and I do something and she's like, I'm surprised. I'm like...